Twenty twenty four, sorry about that, my mic flew off again. If you didn't hear me, welcome to the study session. For the Lakewood City Council this Monday, March eleven, twenty twenty four. We have three items for discussion tonight. The first is a neighborhood connections update from our program coordinator. So Chris Davis, come on up and lead us through your memo and work plan.
Sure.
In order to just facilitate our technological presentations for you. So I will introduce very briefly. Who will be the main star for you this first topic? My name is Tiffany Spear, Long Range Strategic Planning for the city of Lakewood. But I'd like to introduce to you Christopher Davis, who is the neighborhood coordinator, which was a position that the council authorized as part of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And he began with the city last fall. So the first item in your packet is just a memo that explains what he's done so far. What priorities are and what he's intending to do at this point for the rest of his, the twenty-four, twenty-five timeframe. But that's part of the discussion tonight is to hear from that and then hear back from you, making sure we're covering all the bases. So I'm going to start this up. One sec.
Do we need to bring down?
No, it's fine. You're good. You're good.
It's still working. Okay. He didn't fund it.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Yes, as Tiffany said, my name is Christopher Davis. I'm in Neighborhood Connections Programs Coordinator. And pretty much the memo that you have in front of you is kind of, kind of going over, yeah, kind of going over the background of my position and kind of what I've been doing so far, kind of my current projects and kind of where I'm looking. Kind of the work plan moving forward. As Tiffany said, this position really involves connecting with the community. So really doing, bringing, bringing folks more into, into the city of Lakewood. Like, how can we engage? How can we engage citizens already in living in Lakewood and bring them more into some of these meetings, be more engaged with them in the city? And also making more community ties of collaboration towards each other. So the first part kind of describes the background, kind of just going over connecting with local, connecting with local organizations, connecting with youth organizations, seeing how they all can collab better and how the city can support those. A big theme that's been a lot in Lakewood, if I've been in my time here, has been collaboration. Everyone wants to collaborate. Everyone wants, they see collaboration. That's a big theme here in Lakewood. So that's kind of, my position is kind of based off of is really this collaboration piece. So. Okay. So in the discussion part of the memo, you would see kind of the organizations and meetings I've been having since October. That being internal, looking at the communications department, public works, parks, et cetera, that I've been meeting with to see how my position can fit in with those. I've also met a lot of external, external organizations similar like Lakewood United, Korean Women's Association, Oasis, Oasis Youth Center, all these type of organizations that I met with and kind of seeing what support they're looking for, what collaboration could they have, what connections could they be made with other organizations in the city to better their services for, for the residents of Lakewood. Awesome. So next is the priorities. So kind of priorities, looking in internal collaboration. So how can departments work better and collaborate with each other better? Looking at diversity and equity and inclusion. How can the city of Lakewood, looking at their programs currently, be more diverse? Looking at equity, looking at inclusion, also community engagement, connecting with local organizations, bringing them here. How introducing them to the city of Lakewood. A lot of folks have not really been, who have been working in Lakewood have not really connected with the city. And that's just a big part of this position is really folks getting connected with the city. How can we support? What can we do for, for Lakewood residents? I'm spending from here. I can't see from there. Okay. Great. And so the kind of closest to the last part is kind of my work plan. So I kind of went down through a timeline of kind of what I've been looking to do. Part of it from like October to December was really learning about what's in Lakewood. What are the issues? What are the common themes I'm hearing about in meetings and how that goes forward? So that was kind of the first section of part. Now in the January and March is actual work. So now I'm actually helping out in certain departments. I'm actually going out there and being like, hey, what, what piece can the city support you in? And how can we get other organizations to collaborate with each other? A big portion right now is looking at neighborhood associations and seeing, seeing, hey, what support needs is there and other people who want to start them. On the last page, there is also a draft of kind of a step to guide of how to start a neighborhood association. A lot of community members are looking to start one, or really want to engage back into with the city and talk about issues that are happening in their neighborhood, but don't know how to actually go through that process. So we're drafting, I'm drafting one right now and trying to figure out, you know, here's some step guides of how to do. There's currently two, two neighborhoods I'm specifically working with right now. One in the Fort Silicon Park area and another one in Lakeview area that are very interested in starting a neighborhood association. And we're starting those discussions, making it very clear that a neighborhood association is a neighborhood run group. That it's not from the city, but it's, we're here to support those because those, those topics and those discussions are really important to have. Through. Yeah, okay. And then there's also those common themes, as I said before, those really common themes I've learned throughout this, one being transportation. A lot of folks talk about transportation being a big need. Buses, Pierce Transit has been named a lot. So transportation, how can, especially around youth and youth programming? How can youth be on, how can we get more transportation offerings for youth? For like late nights and other programming that might be there. If you can't get to it, it's kind of not, it's kind of useless at that point. So we're kind of looking at transportation. Another one is youth services and education. A lot of youth feel like there's not a lot of things to do in Lakewood for them. And having more youth programs, more late nights, more things like that was a big concern. Also more, more community capacity in building, resource building. A lot of, a lot of, there's a lot of organizations doing great work in Lakewood. They're not really collaborating or talking to each other kind of about what they're doing and having those resources. So some people might be repeating resources, other might not be, bringing services. And most people are not connected. So that's been a big point. And I've been working with, working with people internally here to see how we can get a resource map and things built here within the city. So folks can know, hey, if I'm looking for food, I can hit this resource map. I can now know where those services are and now go through them and they get served. And also further more collaboration because folks actually know what's going on and more things like that. Another big issue that's been popping up is a lot of organizations need volunteers. And there's a lot of people who are willing to volunteer, but are not really having those, are not really connecting. So a big thing is trying to make, and how can we make a central place for folks who are needing volunteers in the city of Lakewood and folks are willing to volunteer as well. And then kind of going to last part is kind of the current projects that I'm working on. And so with Public Works, I'm doing community outreach to the Spring Brick area, kind of about the Lakewood, Lakewood Station access improvements. Then the communications, I'm working on that community calendar, looking at other events and also a central place for that barn, for volunteering in Lakewood. I'm also looking at a stream, also looking ways of how to make a streamlined process for the process of volunteering in, in the city of Lakewood. So right now, there's not really a process for volunteers. You want to volunteer at parks, for example, or in other, other departments within the city. So looking at a way to streamline in that process. I'm also community development, looking at updating our permit forms for the city. So I've been doing a lot of that work as well. Externally, it's been a lot of connections. So community-based organizations like Lakewood United, trying to do a partnership with Lakewood United in the city of Lakewood and maybe so, so we can create a more positive civil engagement discourse. Also working with the Cuban Women's Network Association to start doing more intergenerational programming. So more like youth and elders with cooking and things there. Spring Bush Connections, we're doing some work and also with Telecom, Telecom Community Center providing resources and happily doing a resource fair in the summer. With the neighborhood associations, as I said before, creating an upstart guide for that. So anyone who wants to do a neighborhood association knows what that means, knows what that entails. It knows like, hey, this is the process to go through if you want to be recognized by the city council. Whew, sorry, this is a lot. And also doing business engagement, attending a lot of events, talking to business owners. And also doing a lot of youth, youth engagement. So looking at other youth programs and bringing them into Lakewood. I have one called Teamwork that I'm currently working with that looks at video gaming. So I'm creating video game spaces for youth. They're very interested in coming into Lakewood. So we're having that conversation right now. And I think that's about it. Oh, no, lies. So also doing, a big point of the job is also connecting with a lot of groups like MeCentro, Black Collective, in getting them more connected within Lakewood. Because that's a, a group. Being Lakewood being predominantly BIPOC, that's a group that's doing that work in Lakewood and the city should have connections to those that have attached. So that is kind of it. That's the quick version.
Well, it's a lot.
Yes.
I'll open it up to council members to see if they have questions or feedback. Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Chris. Nice meeting you and it's great to have you in this position. We just really need this connection to our neighborhoods. So I'm interested in how we could create more neighborhood associations. That is one thing that I think would be really, really good. And the other thing I'm really interested in and looking into is creating a matching grant program for our neighborhood associations. So it could be things where it's really small, where they can apply for grants for communications, like their newsletters. So they need to get them printed. Or they need to pay for the website to host those on to a smaller grant, you know, with specific parameters and then a large grant. And I think that those things could be looked at maybe from our human services budgeting for this coming next biennium. So I think that that would be something I would be very interested in. I found it really beneficial in other communities. You know, it gets the, it gets your neighborhoods involved with creating better spaces in their, in their neighborhoods and just really a lot of buy-in. And it's just very helpful to them. So I don't know if that's something we could look into a little bit more. And then I really encourage you to beef up your neighborhood page. I checked it out. And it's just a map and a list. I would love it if it had more resources and links and different types of things on there to really connect, connect with the communities. But I think it's a really good start. I think there's a lot in there. There's a lot to do, a lot to tackle. But yeah, I'm really, really encouraged by it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good job. I met with a whole host of people and identified a lot of issues in a short period of time. I think, and that's, that's great. Is there any, you know, looking towards the end of the, your report here and whatnot, anything that you would consider to be low hanging fruit? Things that we could do right away, like within the next twelve months? And then other things that are more intermediate? Maybe longer term?
Yeah, I'm, to me, that's low hanging fruit is more just looking. I don't know if that's on. Um, I would say more like updating the website, getting more people, like having those resources on our website. Having that document of how you start a neighborhood organization, a neighborhood association. I think those are things that could be done pretty quickly and they kind of are. Things are more long-term. I think it's going to be the, having those groups be more established and be able to, and getting those structures together. I think that's, that's going to be the longest because starting off, having these type of community meetings takes, takes time and takes folks who are really, are really, you, you have, you have to have really good, strong community members to help uphold this meeting. So, yeah.
Okay, okay. So, so and you, you mentioned you're working with two neighborhoods, which I think is, is great. And at least one of them, I would not have guessed. It wouldn't have been. And so that will take time because I do have to find places and which, which can sometimes provide a challenge. About things like the community resources map, which I guess you're working with Shannon Bennett on. I, I guess I was, I guess hard to hear at some, at some level that there's a lot of folks that want to volunteer and they're just looking for the right opportunities. So that seems like a role that we could help facilitate, I guess, through the website. So I was pleased with that, I guess, that there are people out there who are saying, yeah, I want to volunteer. I want to help. And of course, the city has volunteer opportunities too. And we don't ask that they show up every month even, right, to do stuff. So well, thank you very much. I think, I think you did a really nice job of identifying a lot of different issues and there, there's a lot to, to work on here. So thank you.
Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would echo all of Mr. Boki's comments. And you know, this, this is a new role and a new, you know, you're, you're learning everything and kind of having to decipher, you know, everything. So I think as you move forward, it would be really helpful in the next time you come back and present, you know, that you have a maybe some, some targeted deliverables or something that we can, you know, kind of chew on and go through and say, okay, yeah, I think these might, you know, make some sense. And I do like the idea of low hanging fruit or, you know, ranking things that are a, you know, we could do this and, you know, quickly with limited effort, limited budget, or things that are going to take a lot of inclusion or a lot of work from outside folks and, you know, lots of coordination and, you know, take time to develop. So yeah, we're definitely not at the, you know, we're, we're still deciphering and taking in all this data and all this information, but it'll be really important to, once we do get it deciphered, to start coming up with some, some specific things that we can do that, you know, yeah, we want to create so many neighborhood, you know, associations. We want to, you know, make sure that these people are talking to each other and, and things like that. We want to be hosting community, you know, whatever it is. Having some sort of target that we can say, yeah, you know, this year we did all these things and it's working or this is not working. And we can kind of build on that and, you know, create a plan moving forward. So, yeah, great work and, yeah, looking forward to it.
Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for the presentation tonight and your, and your work to this point. And your vision for your work, which is what you've provided us here to do. I did want to follow up on Councilmember Pearson's to emphasize the importance of perhaps coming up with some metrics to to put in front of you to, that we can use to gauge of how effective you are. It is not so much that we sit here and directly evaluate how effective you are. We actually evaluate how the city manager, but, but for a number of iterations, we have been encouraging him to get someone to do what you are now embarking on. And being able to go and do that. I, I do think that the it's, it's important as we try to build some relationships, particularly with existing and new neighborhood associations and other groups within the city that have that are positioned to take on the same role as spokes, spokespersons for, for the neighborhood associations. That we take a look in the, in the, in the twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six biennium as to whether a small grant program can be fit into that budget. And some parameters about what it could be used for, so that it's used for things that are, that are assessed as that would actually be effective to be able to go and do that. I guess I was surprised in terms of reading your purposes. Okay? And that you, you know, were particularly looking at instead of being effective, you were looking to be efficacious. Which is a, which, which is a higher bar than, than effective to be able to go and do that. So, you know, I, I look, look, look forward to your being able to go and do that work. I have received feedback from a number of the groups that you have mentioned here that have interacted with you and you have made positive impressions on folks in the community from neighborhood associations to people that want to be a neighborhood association, to, to some of the other groups that just want to play a role in, in the city. The last thing is if I was to ask you to add something to this as a part of the city team that, that it comes from all departments is that you know, ten years ago, we created a, a, a vision for the city of Lakewood. We have a vision. Okay. And, and, and the vision was, you know, we, we discussed that at, at some length of time and it took us over two years to come up with that vision because we had a false start, I guess would be the way to, to, to say that. We, we, we started off and then, and then, you know, we ended up with something that we were supposed to approve and we didn't like it. And so we went through a different way of doing it. But the vision is for what is Lakewood going to be like in twenty twenty-six? And I think that we're at a point of where you are discussing with folks, you know, somewhere in the twenty-five, twenty-six biennium, we've got to start to work on what is the, the vision for twenty thirty-six or twenty forty-one, if we want to expand it out fifteen years. So if you would look to have those discussions with folks and and I guess my, my, my last thing is that I would encourage you to be more of a listener than a communicator. People will always ask you questions and they want, because you're the, you'll be the face of the city at some meetings that you go to, to be able to go and do that. But it's really not so quickly to give them on the spot answers as to listen and understand their questions and then talk with your colleagues on the city staff. Or if it's, if necessary to, to, to have questions run through us before you go to that. Don't fall into the trap of being, to be the, the, the end-all, know-all expert immediately to people, even though they will try to put you in that position.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, thank you for the report. You mentioned transportation. And that's something that has been a problem for some time. But I noted, I was, I attended a promise board meeting on Thursday. And one of the things that the students talked about was that even if they were on a bus route, they didn't know how to maneuver themselves around that. So they were asking if perhaps that could be a class, some, some sort taught as to where they can get the, the routes, the booklets and stuff. Because they don't have that information apparently. So that would be something that sounds like you're connected with to help, help them out there.
Thanks, Chris, for the information and the presentation. On the transportation issue, I can link you with someone at Pierce Transit. I'm on the Pierce Transit Commission. I just left the meeting there tonight. And, you know, they have seen, Lakewood is interestingly enough, it's the number one agency for boardings in the Pierce Transit arena. You know, Lakewood has like eight hundred thousand boardings this last year, which is great. Out of the transit center and the other one. Yeah, it's pretty amazing. I mean, Tacoma has three of them collectively that probably exceed eight hundred, but Lakewood has a center, has the largest boardings. And when the transit agency received funding from the state government, I forget the name, it was Something Riot or whatever. It allowed youth to have free passes. And so between that and this thing called Orca Lift, which is a program that allows folks of limited means to have free access to transit. The overall ridership from year to year from twenty-two to twenty-three increased by twenty-three percent. So pretty huge. But if there are gaps, and this goes to your point, if there are gaps, let's figure out what we can do to address them. So I'll connect you with someone there and they can either provide an opportunity for training or the resources, or that might lead to a conversation on how we can perhaps have a, a runner service, maybe for late night or some identified youth programming evenings that would allow sort of shuttle service that they have now in certain areas of their, their transit system, which I think could work out quite well. So that is something we can accomplish. So my question to you, in addition to thanking you for the work and the report and the interim status of it all, is just what's your impression anecdotally from what you've heard out there? What are the sort of the big issues that you are hearing about impediments or obstacles to this collaboration that you want to enhance? What are some of the impediments right now that we need to address or think about? What are stumbling blocks for us or what have been stumbling blocks?
That's a good question. I would say that I would say, I think one would be, actually, are you, can I ask a follow-up to that? Are you asking a more collaboration with other organizations to the city of Lakewood or just in general?
Well, I'm, my focus would be more on the residents, whether they're in neighborhoods and are looking to have a neighborhood association, or whether they're members of other organizations. And they want to enhance collaboration with Lakewood. Is it a communications piece? Not knowing what and how. Is it a funding piece if they don't have the resources to start up? Is it?
I, I do think communication is like the biggest one. In my talks with a lot of residents, it's been they don't feel like they're getting a lot of communication from the city, that there's not someone that's, that is out, like, that was me, someone who's out there talking to them, engaging with, can bring someone at their hearing issue about the roads and they want someone to come to their meeting. It's really hard to contact someone if you don't have an in within the city.
Or if you don't have an association set up because we do go out to those scheduled meetings and chat with them with.
And then if they need someone, specifically someone in the city to talk to or come to our meetings, I can reach out and say, hey, this person from Public Works come to this association meeting and have a conversation around this project. I would say funding is another piece, but typically hasn't been, hasn't been the topic that, I think that communication piece is a big piece.
So when you are meeting with folks, are you doing it physically or more over the phone or how are you?
All the above?
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I'm wondering, I'm thinking out loud, which is dangerous. The, I'm thinking that on the communication piece, it's my impression that we have a significant presence.
A significant presence on social media. The city's website's pretty up to date and thorough. Two social medias, Facebook, Instagram. And I think we engage on my Lakewood life. I wonder if it might be a helpful thing. To have a little bookmark or a little something that would have all these little. If you want to learn more about your city or you want to get engaged, check out the website or the Facebook or the this. Or here's a phone number or you want to know about how to get a hold of a bus schedule. Here's, you know, those kinds of things that might be a little handy. Calling card you could leave with people. Because I sometimes don't, my impression, don't think that it's. For lack of our effort at communication, I think sometimes it's a gap in knowing where to find the information. And educating people on that sometimes. Can we be better about communicating stuff? Always, right? But I think sometimes it's an education piece on. Telling people the information is here, here's how to find it, because sometimes I think that's the gap.
And along those lines, one of the things that I've learned is that there are a lot of people that don't have access to our social media. And so that is a problem in some of the areas.
I know Comcast has done. A fair amount of work in expanding their network to underserved areas. Maybe we can learn more about that if need be. Any else have a thought on that? But anyway, more to follow. It's just, I I think sometimes leaving them with a piece of information in their hands where they can know where to find stuff. Might be a helpful tool for you. You know, we can work on that. What do you think?
Yeah, I think that that is all really good. I think you we need to build our associations. And then I think we need to do other things than just go to their meetings. I have a really good program that I know about and we go and we connect with the associations. Okay, so it's called and I and I got it from someone here locally. I saw it in my own neighborhood where they call it Drinks in the Driveway. And so we created a program called Drinks in the Driveway where we bring, yeah, in Kent. And so I bring my public works director, the chief usually, and of course, the mayor always go. And we have a little cart, an ice cream cart that we fill with drinks or ice cream. And we go to someone's driveway, pop up a tent, call everybody in. There it's usually working with the HOA, but it's always with our registered. People and we book it from May until September and it is full. And people really come, they're able to ask their questions, things that are very pertinent to their area. And it's us going out to them and connecting with them. I know that they have their meetings. Which are great, but this is something a little bit different, something very casual. And it's very, very effective and we're booked and already throughout all summer already. But I it's it's really important to bring those people who can talk to the subject. People really like, especially with roads and infrastructure, they want the public works director there. They want to talk to. They always want to talk to the chief, always. So that kind of stuff, so meeting people where they're at, I think, and you find really different ways to do it is important. I think that really creating, taking your website and beefing it up with resources will be good. And then creating some different, here's some guidelines, hey, you want to form what you're already working on, which you suggested. Here's how you form a neighborhood association. Give them some examples of maybe here's what some bylaws might look like, you know, all the things that are very scary to people like, I don't know where to start. And then go from there, but I think we just need to build up our associations, but creating some sort of little other programs to layer upon your other things. Will be great. I am more than happy to send some information off to the city manager that he can forward along.
No, great points. Mr. Brand Center.
Yeah, I I just I would just follow up with one other thought that. Didn't get mentioned in your in your process about starting a neighborhood association or really starting. A a group that wants to be effective or an existing group that wants to become more robustly involved. To be able to go and do that. And that that people come up with good ideas, but they. Don't from the beginning plan on how continuity will take place. I mean, one of our situations with neighborhood associations is that we. Used to have more and and some some are not here. And 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 one of the. Symptoms of that was there were associations that were dependent upon a single or a pair of people for their. Energy, okay, and 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 we're doing it. And so as you talk to folks. You don't make it sound too easy. If if you want to be an effective organization, it it requires some work. You know, the city will do its part, but there's there's some work on on your part to be able to go to do to particularly to reach out and. And do engagement of your communities to use your group as a as a means of of learning. Or of resolving. Issues to be able to go and do that and be. Candid with them to do that. And in fact, that's in my mind, that could consider. How that can be an element of someone applying for a grant to do something, you know, we we. The city, when we have to apply for grants to do things, we've got to kind of. Address maintenance or how it's going to have long term viability rather than be a one time. Shot in the dark.
Well, I like Drinks in the Driveway. I would do that on numerous evenings if. Oh, water and coffee, oh geez, yeah, all right. That changes my level of support, yeah. Yeah, on the twenty seventh of March, I'll turn over to somebody else to comment. On the twenty seventh of March, we're having the Mayor's Coffee House at Fort Soakin Park. So I would encourage folks that you're connecting with, have them come out to that, and certainly you might want to be there. To learn about events, upcoming events, because I think that's the evening where we're really going to. Feature and portray, you know, parks and rec and all the services and events are coming out for the year, so it's a good way to connect. Mr. Pearson.
I just, one more thing that kind of popped in my mind was, you know. I've been to a number of neighborhood association meetings and it's. You know, fairly similar when you look around the room, there's a decent amount of gray hair and, you know, that's so. You know, how how do we get some of the folks from like the youth council and those types of, you know, some of the youth folks involved in some of these neighborhoods? You know, we talk about, we want to have. You know, them not just, you know, the neighborhood associations die off, but getting some youth in to, you know, help kind of bridge the gap. Between people leaving and coming and going and 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 getting them involved, so. I think that'd be an interesting, I don't know what, you know, what they can do, but. That would be a great thing to have on like a resume if you're, you know, an eighteen year old or a twenty year old, you know, that you've been involved in these community. You know, service activities and you're involved in your neighborhood community, neighborhood association, things like that, so.
Be good. Speaking of one with gray hair, it would be great. Less gray hair as the years go by. Anything else for the good of the order? Thank you very much. I think you're off to a good start. Keep digging. You know, keep digging and and if you need resource help, certainly chat with Ms. Spear who will communicate that to the. Manager and we will help do what we can.
Thank you.
Yep, you bet. Okay, next, we've got our twenty twenty four comprehensive plan periodic update for Ms. Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One moment, please.
Got it, okay. So the smart board is not very smart tonight, so we don't have that available. So just help us when you are pulling up the slides that are over our head that we can't see. Our packet, yeah, as you go through, then we should be fine.
Yeah, I'm just going to walk through the PowerPoint that was actually within your. Your materials for this evening, so you're welcome to look at your own screen rather than having to crane your neck. And this begins on page twelve of your pack. So thank you again, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor and members of the council. This is the next in a series of these meetings that we've been bringing to you, just updates about the twenty twenty four comprehensive plan process. You all know this, but I'll just repeat it for the the listening audience. This is a once every ten year process for the city, so. We do have an annual comprehensive plan cycle where people can come in or the city itself can suggest either. Policy changes or regulatory changes or actually zoning changes. And that tends to happen four or five items sometimes per year. And it's it's pretty much cherry picked in terms of whoever the audience is asking for the change. This is a comprehensive change. This is front to back, the entire comprehensive plan itself. All the associated land use development regulations. And then in addition to that, what we have incorporated are the optional. Elements of the comp plan, meaning the subarea plans. So downtown station district, you will have. Biennial reviews in front of you for both of those subareas. And then in addition, you will have a new Tillicum Woodbrook Subarea Plan that is replacing. The two thousand eleven Tillicum Neighborhood Plan. So all of those things are coming at you. But what we're going to be talking about tonight is just where we're at in terms of getting ready to bring the full package. To the Planning Commission this spring and then to you this summer. And then we're also going to touch on the twenty twenty four annual housing report, which has come to you in the past as its own thing. But because the twenty four comp plan review is so tied to housing, we're just bringing it all to you at once because they're so. Connected to each other. So the scope, we're following state law, we're updating local document policy and regulation per state law. Per regional policy and then through countywide policy. There are the optional things I just mentioned, so the three subarea plans. We're also updating the energy and climate change element, which if you remember a few years ago, the city proactively adopted. On a voluntary basis, but since then, this has now been added as a new element to the GMA. So we are in the process of looking at what was already adopted in Lakewood to see if any edits are needed in order to comply with the new state requirements. And then we have Lakewood specific issues which will be in front of you. Some of these have been brought to you in some form already, at kind of as a prep work for the twenty four review. But this includes the short term rental regulations and in particular, the question of whether short term rentals. Can, should, will be allowed within accessory dwelling units throughout the city. There's the parking policies and regulations, given the changes to state law and what the city has to do in terms of densifying. Its single family areas. And then there's the downtown transportation mitigation fee, which has been in place now since twenty eighteen when the subarea was adopted. There's been over time, a number of questions and maybe. Somewhat informal discussions about the TMF, but this will be brought in front of you as part of the. Review of the whole subarea to see if some changes need to occur. So quickly, again, the state law that has changed recently, there was Bill twelve twenty. Which says not only do you plan for one single growth target number, but now you're planning for a certain number of units for all. Levels of area median income. Middle housing, which is that definition there you see on the screen. Anything from duplexes up to courtyard apartments, townhouses within single family areas. And then allowing accessory dwelling units, multiple of those per lot in single family areas as well. Not to go into too much gritty detail, but this is just providing a little bit more on what twelve twenty required. And we have already moved our way through most, if not all of this at the first blush. We're doing some. Additional edits right now before it goes to the Planning Commission in May. This table you've seen before, and again, I'll touch on it very quickly, but this summarizes where additional units per lot. Are going to be either required or allowed based on state law changes. So middle housing, and again. I think this question was asked at the council level, just to clarify, ADUs would be considered one form of middle housing. Middle housing is a broader definition, but ADUs, if you wanted to try to split hairs. It would be considered a subset of middle housing as well. There are, however, because of the two different bills, slightly different rules that apply. So for much of the city's single family areas, two units per lot. However, if you're within a quarter mile of a quote major transit stop, that's where four units per lot. Or four units per lot of middle housing anywhere in the city. If one of them or more than one is considered affordable, meaning below market rate by probably eighty percent or below. And then in the ADU world, again, allowing at least two. That on all lots that meet the minimum lot size in the various zones that you see there, so R one through R four. Mixed residential one and two and arterial residential commercial. And then you can limit if you are looking at lots that are below two thousand square feet. To a maximum of two ADUs. So yes, you could in theory have a twenty five hundred square foot lot with up to four ADUs in addition to a primary residence. How that would work, I don't know, but that is in the law.
I was going to ask the question, I know that. We're dealing with this wonderful thing called theory right now, planning theory, but have we started to see in planning public works? Folks actually looking at, gee, how do I squeeze three units on my seventy five hundred square foot? R two lot or R three zone lot? I mean, how are we going to physically do that?
Yeah, what are what we are doing at this point is through the open houses in particular, I do get those questions. We have some people that come. That are very concerned with what changes they can anticipate in the neighborhood, but then you do have those saying, how do I do this and when can I start? And so we are looking at questions like, do I have to have? The sewer and water hookups? Yes, you do. These are not, you pull a motor home up next to the other main house and plug it into the side of the house. You know, for electricity, this is starting to talk about. How you truly bring infrastructure to these existing lots, stubs, etc.
You wouldn't short plaid the lot, it's allowable on one single family lot, right? You'd have units A, B, C, and D or whatever on.
Correct.
You know, lot one, block twelve of Main Street, whatever it would be.
And when we did some initial discussion about addressing, yeah, with the way the post office at this point would be a dealing with the the city. Is of the opinion that it would simply be the main house would continue to get all the mail. And then if there were other. Addresses requested, that is up to the property owner and the US Post Office. That has nothing to do with the city. It's their responsibility ultimately anyway.
But no segregation or short plating of lots is required. It's all on one tax parcel. Yeah, fascinating. I don't know how it's going to work, but. It's amazing, isn't it? Mr. Pearson, setbacks, all that sort of stuff. It's unbelievable.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So you mentioned the the mail, but what about emergencies vehicle services or like, you know, how are these? Are they addressed differently with, you know, on a map that this is building one, two, three and four? If we are sending first responders somewhere, how do we know what building they're in if there's four, you know, or whatever, six, depending on which.
It's an excellent excellent question to which we do not have an answer at this point. State law doesn't require one thing or the other, so it's really up to the city to figure out how it's going to handle this. Coupled with whatever coordination might be requested of the post office to understand address addressing, but that is a. A very complex process in and of itself right now. And whether or not they're ready for this, not only from Lakewood but other jurisdictions as well. We suddenly have two or we suddenly have three things on this lot. How do you guys want to handle it? We don't, we don't have the answer yet.
Okay, thanks.
So, oh, sorry.
Just a real quick question, what's the effective date of all this? Are we in this world now or?
No, no, these are all waiting action by the city council for the twenty twenty four periodic review. In in fact, the way the state bills themselves read, these are not required to be in place until June thirtieth of twenty five. However, we've brought this to you as part of the twenty four process because. In in our opinion, it's not recommended to reopen the wound within six months. You know, do do this all at once, get all of the housing decisions done at once and move ahead from there.
So we, for those specific items, we could put in a June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
As part of the action that you were to take, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brand Center.
It seemed that in the legislative session just completed. There were a number of potential bills or bills that went through that were looking to. To mitigate or mitigate some of these standards or to provide. Some options as to how to implement them. Where you just didn't necessarily have to have everyone if you had enough that was going to meet your long term. goals. So is is given that that session has just ended, is are we are we reasonable to expect the planning commission to take those choices, choices that could be made or options? And and to and and to work them into a thing, particularly since much of the housing stuff planning commission talked about last year, actually, to be able to go and do that. Is that a heavy lift that that there were things or is that? Or is it possible that some parts of the comprehensive plan review will be done, but with work to be done before the 2025 date?
I would say it's probably both. It's a combination of both, council member. What we have going on is these three bills on this slide I mentioned, 1998, 2160, and 2321, at least at the point that this was put into your packet, were the ones closest related to housing issues that were still alive before the the session ended. I'll have to go back and verify as of Sinadai what actually survived. But the intent at this point is to say, okay, planning commission, you started working last year with early drafts with 1220, 1110, 1337, middle housing, ADU stuff. These are the changes that just happened. It is up to you. Do you want to redraw, redraft? Do you want to say this is what's going to go to effect through 2024's process and then anticipate additional amendments in 25 that you would recommend to council? How how do you want to do that? And so that discussion has yet to occur.
Okay, and and is the same true for as we deal with the the conflicts between state encouraged climate and things that seem to conflict with some of this our own efforts and our community's interest in tree preservation that you know, how are we going to be able to articulate in the comprehensive plan? The role and the prioritization that certain other rules, other than just the straight out hospital 1110 rules apply that are going to mitigate things such as in shoreline areas and 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 others. Or is that going to be something that gets left on a case by case basis to a are permitting people or the the hearing examiner as as they're doing that? Is there just too many iterations and variations of how things might really work out on a lot?
I'll try to provide an answer that is both concise and accurate, see if I can do it. So there's two levels to you to responding to you, council member. A, the comprehensive plan itself will have policies and explanations that say and reflect up to 2023's comprehensive plan, the priorities. So the council has already said tree canopy, for instance, of 40% by 2050. It's already said, these are our vision for the city through 2026. It's got the longstanding recognition of various sub areas of the city as important or growth centers, etc. Trying to stay consistent with all of that and saying, given state law, these are the tweaks that we had to do as a result of the state law. Otherwise, this is consistent to pass policy set by council. However, when we start to talk about when does, for instance, somebody have to put two versus four versus no accessory dwelling units on their lot? What the the regulations would say or what the policy would say in the comprehensive plan is this is the general rule. But here is parcel by parcel, specific analysis that will be required. So there's no guarantee, there's no promise, there's no sense of these, this is an area where it absolutely won't apply. It's going to try to be as very as clear as possible to say, you got to come and ask these questions to finally get a a specific answer for your parcel.
And and on this chart to within the let me see where it's like I look at the one that says middle housing. If one or more unit is affordable. And is that affordable to purchase or affordable to rent? Or is it either or? How did the legislation define affordable?
This is referring to ownership. The intent behind some of these rules and some of these bills is to increase the percentage of homeowners. And so looking at that item, it would be the purchase price being, again, affordable. 30% of your gross monthly income, you could afford the down payment and the mortgage of house X located in city Y. That's the idea.
Okay, I guess that that sounds challenging to write into the comprehensive plan, given that what's affordable today, if sold next year may not be to it to the same extent. Well, I again, I think the community is interested that we not just blindly apply all the housing rules, but that we take a look at all of the different priorities that we have and 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 make and and come up with a comprehensive plan that that has compatibility between the different interests and concerns and legislation that that we're obligated to. It would help if Olympia would pass legislation having done that, that work to to be able to go and do that. But I guess then I would ask that if the planning commission, as they work to look through it and as they do this and they come to us with a recommendation, that there would also maybe be the possibility of some recommendations that we advocate for some changes in a future legislative sessions that 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 they are finding hard to put into into effect. If that, give give the planning commission that option. They may or may not choose to do that. But that would be helpful where we know that they had to make really hard choices that they'd rather not have made, but that they, but if the if if the wording of the legislation was different, we could go forward to do that, particularly given that we may have a 2025 legislative session before some of this is mandatorily required. That, and I and and my suggestion, Mr. Mayor, is that you have to seriously consider doubling the salary of the planning commission.
Exactly, you know. It's going to be a lot of work.
All right. So in terms of where we sit with progress, the checkmarks, oh, I'm sorry.
I had a question. Yep. Sorry about that. I need my little raise the hand feature here on my screen.
Thanks, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted, while we're on this topic, so had a couple of follow up questions. And one, we talked about affordability and and being able to buy a unit. Can you buy, you know, I don't know if these are ADUs or they're just middle housing. They're all in a fee simple lot. Can you buy, you know, unit B or unit C without owning all four of them? Or do you have to own all four of them? Or are they like airspace condos or?
Aerospace condos is the thought.
Okay, so you can buy.
Is that right? Interesting.
So you can buy someone's unit in their backyard as an airspace condo?
That's that's the thought.
Okay, okay. And then, um, thank you for that. The other thing that, you know, is when I'm thinking about, okay, people are going to want to do this. They want to make money. They want to do things, you know. Can we come up with something that, you know, is similar? That we can control more, that might kind of work with developers and stuff too, like, I know in Pierce County, we we have like infill lot creation standards that are kind of like these special standards where, you know, you don't have like lot line setbacks, so you can build like fee simple lots. It's like for, you know, but they they have to go through the subdivision process. So we're getting frontage improvements, those sorts of things, and we're creating fee simple lots. So it's, you know, it's but they're affordable units for people to buy. So it's just, it's just a different, you know, product that you can sell. So just some thought to that when we're going through this about, you know, maybe being creative to try to get in front of some, you know, this and really have a way to control it a little bit. I understand that we have, you know, it's state mandated and stuff, but if we have another tool that we can, you know, sell to people to use that kind of accomplishes a similar goal that we can control a little bit more, you know, that might be something. And then the other thing is, you know, we have all these state mandated requirements that have to go into our code. And really, we need to figure out, okay, how do we want this to look, right? Do we want to have fourplexes everywhere? Is that allowed? Can you have a fourplex, like a multifamily, you know, to get your four units? Can you build that?
Middle housing is up to six units. Yeah.
Yeah. So you can have a, okay, so then, you know, how do we incorporate into our code, you know, the aesthetic appeal? You know, the the architectural codes and things like that. And then also, you know, do we want to make the open space requirements more strict on these like size of lots that are going to be really, you know, people are going to be looking for these size of lots that they can put, you know, some more units on or anyway, things like that when we're going through this to kind of think about the vision that you want, you know, in these neighborhoods. So that's my little spiel. Thanks.
And my only caveat to answering you with yes is that some of the bills explicitly say you can't do anything different with your regulations for these types of units than you would for the single family house that would otherwise be there. So that that leaves some room for interpretation and and what would be adopted, but there is that language within these bills as well.
Yep, thanks.
So in terms of where we sit, there's 11 chapters or elements in the comp plan right now. We're updating that to incorporate new information, reflecting a little closer how state law is organized around all these topics. We now have 17 chapters for the new one. And as you see there with the check marks, a lot of them are done. We do still have some pending. All of this will be completed in front of the planning commission come May 1st. The regulations and other documents that we're also working on, land use capacity analysis, equity review and housing needs assessment, the regulations related to transportation and housing. Again, the biennial reviews for the downtown and station district sub areas, creating an implementation guide for our climate change element, looking at our critical areas ordinance updates, and then the natural environment audit, as well as updated maps and graphics. So you're going to see a very different looking comprehensive plan through this process. And then the last piece we will also be providing, it won't come through the council or the planning commission for approval, but you will be provided a copy of the, excuse me, supplemental environmental impact statement, which has to go through the state department of ecology for review. Public engagement, we've had three very successful open houses. First was in this room last November. We also last May had a mayor's coffee house at the pavilion where we started talking about housing. But since then, we also had in January and then February, two more, both hybrid meetings where we had in person and Zoom attendees. And then at this point, we're looking to hopefully coordinate with the Korean Women's Association to have one more open house this coming month. But as you can see there, they've all been well attended. This is much higher attendance than most land use meetings that we've had at the city. To touch base and respond to a little bit of what you were talking to Chris Davis about, I would hazard a guess that the reason we had such good turnout is we did do hard copy mailers to households. We did not just do electronic communication. And I had multiple people come up to me and say, thank you for sending this. I can hold it in my hand. I can look at it. I can react to it and follow up. So we'll continue to do that. We do also, though, have online resources and we've had them in place for a while. I've got our, first of all, the periodic review update, excuse me, page on the website. We've got the land use update that goes out every four or five weeks to the people that have registered for specifically that topic. And then we have two websites. The Liquid Law Speaks actually takes public comment. So if people are unable to attend the planning commission or council when those dates occur this spring and summer, they will be able to provide formal comment on record through that website. I won't go through all of this in detail, but we've had a number of other types of events where we've met with specific sub area groups or neighborhood associations. We've gone out to, for instance, the Lions Club, the Affordable Housing Consortium. We've met with utilities and education partners when we've had other types of pop up events, including at the Lakewood Youth Summit last year and the Pierce County MBA's Housing Summit last year. So the scope of the specific issues, short term rentals I mentioned, parking policies and regulations, given what is happening under law for how many housing units per lot can be put in place, and then that TMF conversation will happen. Touching base quickly on the short term rentals, and again, this is some information that you saw last fall. But as of last November, there were 136 short term rental units in Lakewood of all types of housing. These aren't just ADUs. That is up from 79 in April of 21. And then as of last November, the nightly rate to rent is about $96. This map shows, as you'll see on the legend there, bottom right, those that are owned or advertised through the top five or the four, and then the other is kind of a conglomerate. But they're all over the city and they are different types of housing units.
Mr. Pearson, yep. Quick question on that. So what is the rental rate? So how are they rented out, you know, 60% of the time? Are they running out 20% of the time? Do we have any?
I don't have that information for you this evening. We're hoping with, yeah, with the new software that we're in the process of purchasing and putting in place to track these in the city, we hopefully will be able to give you that information.
That would be good information to have because this topic got brought up on the planning commission and, you know, people were really concerned that there might be just a ton of these vacation rentals and stuff. And it's like, you know, if they're only being rented out, it's a lower rate.
Right.
People aren't, you know, that have any sort of, you know, they don't, they want to make money. They're just not just going to build these things just to have them sit there. So they might turn into actual housing and not just be short term rentals. So.
It's tough to make a bunch of money on an Airbnb if it costs $450 to build something that's 1,100 square feet, frankly. Mr. Brand Center.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Spear. The last time we sort of got an update on short term rentals to do that and there was we deferred an action based on being able to get an ordinance in place that you created to do that. Is that process on track or is that now been embedded in the comprehensive plan review?
It is embedded into this whole package that you will have in front of you.
So when we would do this, we'd also see an ordinance about talk about licensing requirements and 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 other things at that same time. And, you know, the other iteration of short term rentals, as I recall, when the US Open was over here, there were folks that made space their homes available for two weeks as a short term rental and went on vacation somewhere else to be able to go and do that so that there's some question about permanency of of property being a short term rental that if you're going to rent it out once a year because you're you know, you know, I'm not quite sure that that's that's a short term rental we're talking about. It's not a business. It's just a you know, a chance to do something, but there are events such as the US Open and others that look for people that are willing to rent out space or or a home to accommodate tourism guests for a discreet window. And I think that's a different type of rental than what we're talking about here, about being able to go and do that, particularly if we build some some real requirements as to it must include and have and and do all that to be different. But you know, and I guess we'll just tell the state, don't ever tell us that we have to do all of this much at the at the at the same time to be able to go and do that. And then give the Puget Sound Regional Council the right to criticize it.
So we spoke briefly about this last fall as well. This is a map that shows in red all of the residential streets that are public, but are also less than 60 square feet in width. And the reason this is being depicted for you is that is the narrowest allowed street design right now under the city's code. And it is not wide. And it is not wide enough to allow on street parking. So if you end up with overtime, I mean, no one's suggesting that you're going to have 580 and middle housing units in the first six months of all of this going into effect. But over time, these streets may start to get pressured because of the increased density in these single family, historically, single family areas. And where are the cars going to go? In particular, in those areas that are within quarter mile of the major transit stops that were defined for Lakewood, which includes not only the Sounder Station and the Pierce Transit Center here in downtown, but also that pending BRT route, which comes from Tacoma, kind of down through the downtown and up again into UP and also the future Sounder Station down in Telukum. So two of the four really aren't in place, they just aren't in place and won't be for a while, but we have to plan as if they were. The other thought there on the bottom left of this slide though was just as a point of reference because this, I think, will affect and inform some of the public comment you hear. As of 2022, in the census data, about 40% of the city's homes or housing units, I should say, not just single family, had one vehicle, about 33% of it had two, and almost 20% had three or more. So in terms of how many housing units out there have zero vehicles, you're at about 7.5% as of 2022. So when you start to think about long term planning and the idea that the reason we're not requiring frontage improvements or parking requirements is because these are going to be individuals not having cars, that's your starting point as of 2024 in the city of Lakewood. That's where your population is right now. The project list and the transportation mitigation fee, I don't want to beat this to death this evening, but quickly on the left are those projects that were already in the improvement list for downtown before the sub area was adopted. And then on the right hand side, there were additional projects added. And this is the list that was in place in 2018. So some of these are complete, some of them are not. But there's the list that predated and then was added to by the downtown sub area adoption. What you have here is a heads up regarding transportation mitigation fee conversation, which will be again later for you this year. Long story short, about a total of 29 million in transportation improvements. 50/50 was the policy decision that council took to say, out of the 29 million, half of it will be covered by private development and the other half will be covered by public funds. And based on the predicted growth in the downtown, that translated into a fee of about $2,174 per trip. However, once that was adopted, there was also an administrative policy adopted that said, we're only going to look at increase in trips for a spot in the downtown. So we're going to compare it to the past use of a space. And if the new use doesn't have as many trips or equals the same trips as before, no fee is paid. If they are above it, it's only the increase above the last use. So when you go down to the next few lines, you'll see what that has resulted in. The proposed private fees are about $1,062,000 and collected to date is only $175,400. And then the third line from the bottom of that chart shows that no funds at this point have been set aside for the public share, that 50% on the public side. So this is where the TMF program sits after eight years or so. And this will be obviously something that I know the councils wanted to talk about, but you will be talking about this as part of this conversation this summer.
Mr. Brand Center.
Yeah, you know, I'm, I guess, you know, would like an assessment as to whether this is been an impediment to developments in the downtown. I know that's going to be hard to do because it's all occurred during a time where there was a pandemic time in the middle and the change in ownerships. But the, I will say that one of the things that after we enacted this that surprised me was then the administrative policy that was used to apply this that included that parenthetic of no time cutoff for last use. So where we ended up with things that had not been used for anything for a long time. And when someone used them, they were given credit for uses that existed years and years ago. So that, you know, the one thing that I would like to do is I'd like to sort of get a reasonable amount of time, like, you know, three years or five years or something like that, so that we don't go back and we get. And it really was kind of that if someone built a use, even if they built the same type of business in the same place where there was previously a failed business and there hadn't been any trips being generated for a period of time, to give them credit for what the formula said that if the old business had been successful, what they would be doing. So it's that, I guess I would like to see that administrative policy brought into, whatever it's going to say, brought into the downtown plan and be adopted by council rather than being an administrative implementation policy that was adopted by the folks that had to do that work.
So on that point, it'll be interesting, just for conversation sake, so you have 360 units or 390 or whatever is the application. And in a swath of asphalt that has quote unquote not had use, except for Barnes & Noble. How this TMF is going to apply to a fairly ambitious apartment project?
Under our current thing, they get credit for the Barnes & Noble.
Do they?
You, well, they would be occupying that footprint.
Or a portion of the project.
Yeah, so there'd be some credit from Barnes & Noble traffic that will no longer be there.
Right.
And it's just maybe worth it to remind the council that when this was adopted, this is the option to what otherwise happens throughout the city, which is a traffic impact analysis specific to a project. So it's not like this is, they're not, excuse me. It's not that they wouldn't have had to do any traffic analysis if this hadn't been adopted, they would have been doing a different one.
Right.
And the idea behind the TMF is that if you go through this and follow the planned action ordinance related to downtown, this allows you to avoid SEPA. This lets you get through the permitting activity faster. We just haven't seen that that was, whether it's COVID, whether it's any other reason, there just hasn't been the influx of development that I think was anticipated.
Right.
So the schedule you've seen before, May 1st is drop dead for planning commission introduction. And then June 26th is when they're currently scheduled to finish their work. And then July 8th is when this will be coming to you as a package. The council's public hearing is scheduled right now for August 5th. And then at this point, the schedule goes back and forth through study sessions and meetings until September 3rd, which is when the council is scheduled to take action. Obviously, that's up to you if you want to change that. So any other questions on where we sit with the comp plan process?
Process questions? Looks like we're good.
All right.
The housing report.
The housing report, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on. I will just show you what is in it. The demographics for the residents of the city and workforce, regional and local housing market conditions over the last few years, the housing production over the last decade, I'll touch on that in just a moment. The 10 year periodic review we just have talked about, changing laws have also been talked about. And then short term rentals and parking is something that we've just covered as well. But I'll touch briefly on the regional efforts that are ongoing too. So rather than taking you through all of these things, some of this was presented to you actually last year out of our housing needs assessment. This is our plat activity though for the last decade. So, or excuse me, the building permit activity for the last decade, starting in 2013, going through 2020 on that top graphic, and then 2021, 22 and 23 in the bottom chart, showing that we do continue to build. It's not a huge pace if you were to compare it to Tacoma or Seattle. Obviously, we don't build at that rate, but we do continue to grow.
Not a ton of units in two years, right? 485?
485 units in three years' time.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the idea that's in House Bill 1220 of saying you have to have so many units to total by 2044, that issue, there isn't one for Lakewood. Meaning there is enough capacity in the city to meet the growth target for 2044. Lakewood has enough housing, land set aside for housing for that capacity. The issue that we're going to be dealing with is more the how do we make sure that people can afford at all levels? And also those ideas we've been talking about tonight with where the middle housing and the ADUs go, where short term rentals may be allowed and how to deal with parking as a result of all of that. The other thing I'll touch base on, you've seen this before as well, but this is showing that the conversation about the new types of housing in single family areas will be affected not only by the road width in red, but the bright pink is where we have critical areas in the city and that green is where we have oak stands or critical oak areas presence that will also affect where these housing units actually will be built. So again, this goes back to early discussion with Councilmember Brand Center. There's going to be policy decisions made, but there also has to be parcel by parcel analysis over time, whether two or four or any units could be added to a lot. The other thing I just want to touch on is in addition to shape, which Lakewood was the first city to sign on to, there is now pending discussion with Pierce County and Tacoma to create some sort of, perhaps it's a similar organization, maybe it'll be slightly different, but a regional group to start talking about homeless shelters and homeless services. So the council, I believe, will be contacted in the near future by Pierce County to start that discussion at the elected level. And so we're talking about a lot of different things, obviously. And yes, it's the housing, it's climate change, it's density, it's anti-displacement. As you're well aware, many of the places that would be in an economist's or maybe a land developer's eyes as the primo places to take something down and replace it is exactly where the people with the highest level of racial disparity or historic discrimination live. And so how does the city balance anti-displacement requirements with all this other stuff we're supposed to be following as a city? And then over the last couple of weeks, I know you've heard about the Wild Urban Interface Code and I believe the council manager or city manager sent you a notice saying that that wasn't delayed by the judge. So that is moving forward. We'll adopt what we need to and wait for that map that Mr. Buwer and Mr. Gindy talked to you about a few weeks ago. So that's all I'm going to do with the annual housing report. I'm happy to answer questions or come back if you'd like. But otherwise, it's background information for what's happening with this big periodic review.
Great. Any questions? Lots of good information. Thank you for the work. It's a lot, for sure.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, so before we begin the review of the six year financial forecast, let's take a five minute stretch break. A little coffee, anytime we talk about coffee.
Okay, well. Okay, well, this is a preliminary forecast and it is just early March. We haven't even received our first sales tax distribution and we're still closing up the year. So this is a forecast subject to change. I'll turn your attention to page 112 as a start.
Okay.
So overall, this is focused on the general fund, which is the city's main operating funds. We'll get to the other funds as we get deeper into the budget process. But overall, looking at 2022 to 2030. Okay, can you hear me better?
Can, yep.
Okay, so on page 113, operating revenues and operating expenditures. You can see that the growth between 2022 and 2030 is somewhere between 1.9 and 3.1%. Looking at expenditures, it ranges from 10.5% in 2022 to 3.7% in 2027 to 2030. So basically, there are things that are, the reason for this trend is that first of all, the city's property tax is limited to 1%. The second is inflation. So inflation's caught up with us, revenues are relatively flat growing some, but expenditures are outpacing the revenues. And third, part of the reason for why the increases in the operating expenditures are the tech, well, first of all, personnel costs. So those have increased. And then also the technology tools that the city has implemented in terms of public safety and cybersecurity.
Let me ask you a quick question. So the first bullet is the property tax is limited to gross by 1%. Isn't this an economic development challenge? Shouldn't we be figuring out how to get permits through quicker to get businesses up and running faster so they can generate revenue for sales tax and otherwise?
I guess you'll get it for the new construction.
So actually, Mayor, it is not an economic development issue because from an economic development standpoint, we're doing absolutely fantastic. Over the last six years, we have averaged $120 million in new private investment in Lakewood, which prior to 2018, we were averaging about $25 to $35 million a year. And maybe on a good year, 50 to 60 million. So from an economic development standpoint, we're doing absolutely outstanding. As a matter of fact, some of the projects that we have in the queue, we have Alliance Residential, a national developer that is coming to the downtown and looking to build 390 housing units at a value of $150 million. That'll be the largest private investment project since the town center was built in 2001. But there's more. There's also DevCo, a national and regional developer that is building a Phase One of a three-phase project over by the Lakewood Sounder Station, valued at $90 million. In addition, we continue to have significant investment in light industrial and manufacturing. To date, in the last four or five years, we've added 2 million square feet of that type of product, again, reflecting where the market is, with about another 500,000 to 600,000 square feet looking to come onboard over the next couple of years. So again, it's not, it's the property tax issue is not an economic development issue. The property tax issue is that current property taxes are limited to grow by 1% per year. That 1% generates about $80,000 a year. And so even at 3%, that would be another $160,000. Also, the way our property tax system is set up, for example, the $100 million in new investment, which we have projected into our forecast based on activity the last five years, that generates about $70,000 to $80,000. So even with 1% plus new construction, it's the way the property tax system is set up. As a matter of fact, you know, the property tax system in Washington State is compared to other states is pretty good, actually comparatively speaking. But when you have property taxes limited to 1% per year and you have inflation at 9, 10, 11%, as we've had the last three or four years, the lines begin to cross. And so that's the challenge. And what Ms. Kraus is pointing out on, and the reason that we've identified property tax is because that is our second-largest revenue source at 16% of our general fund after sales tax. And so even though our revenues are healthy, growing at 3%, you know, 16% of it's only growing at 1%, so you kind of do the math there. So that's the challenge, Mayor.
The reason why I raise the question is because if we have these increases of 100 to 20, 130, 160 million dollars in development activity in a given year over three, four, five years, one wonders where the disconnect is with sustained economic activity, not just property as a value, but the economic activity generated by those developments, right? So if that's flatlined, the question is, where's the disconnect?
So actually, there is no disconnect because it's also incorporated into our sales tax, particularly under new construction. One of the driving factors of our sales tax growth has not been retail, which has actually been flat, has not been services, which is growing okay, has actually been new construction, which again comes back to economic development. Likewise, as more housing units come onboard, where we'll begin to see increases and again, we've seen healthy growth is in the area of utility taxes and franchise fees. And again, that is already built into the financial forecast as a positive. So economic development is going very, very strong here in Lakewood and it is showing up in our financial forecast, but at the same time, there are other significant parts of our revenue base that simply are not keeping up. And that's just a matter of state statute.
Very good. Did you have a question? No, okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I'll get back to page 114. And this is just the summary of the general fund. And here you can see the operating income or operating loss. In 2025, we're seeing a operating loss of 1.17 million. And in 2026, it's $952,000. Looking down further in the table, you'll see that we, even though our estimated ending fund balance is 5.9 million, with the reserves that we have targeted in the financial policies, we're short about $2.2 million in 2025. And that grows to about $4.5 million in 2026. Now I'm going to go backwards to page 1.
Which one?
111.
Okay.
And 111 is the assumptions going into the forecast. On item number four, there are a number of positions that are not included in the forecast. These were the limited-term positions that were identified in the 23 and 24 budget. And we identified them as limited term because we didn't feel we could fund them in '25 and '26. So if any of these items were to be restored in the current forecast, either something has to give or we need additional revenue. So that's based on the current forecast.
The 9.25?
Yes, 9.25 positions. And in the general fund, that's about four positions, about $405,000. And then there's also the rental housing safety program or abatement positions, which is about two and a half, at almost $300,000. Within that rental housing safety program or abatement fund, in order to fund those positions, that would require the $12 annual inspection fee to increase to $22. And then we have the CDBG coordinator position, which is a quarter of a position. And then there are a number of ARPA funds funded positions that are listed here that are not included as well. And then throughout the rest of this document, there's a lot of information in terms of, you know, the potential options. If you wanted to fund the gap or add positions back in there, I'm not going to go through them, but some scenarios have been identified.
Let's take a look, give people a chance to digest if they have any questions. Anybody with the forecast assumptions? Any questions on pages 11, 111, 112? Okay.
Okay, and I covered page 113 and 114. On page 115 to 118 is more detailed information on the general fund revenues and departments. And that is all summarized on page 114.
Mr. Brandster, yep.
And I guess I just didn't see on on anything that talked about the opioid settlement funds. Were they included in the forecast or not?
They're not included in the forecast at this time. And if we added the revenues for the opioid, we'd have an offsetting expenditure.
They're pretty modest anyway, aren't they? Like 80,000 to 100,000, maybe?
Yes, and I can't remember, but it goes for a number of years. And then we got the new settlement monies as well. And I'll have that in the final 2023 quarterly financial report.
But we're not planning to put that in the general fund?
It's put in the general fund, but what we're, because we didn't at the time have any idea on how those funds would be spent, it would be an increase in revenues and an increase in expenditures.
Yeah, okay, so we're not planning to do a special revenue fund for the opioid fees right now?
Not right now, no.
Okay.
We're not required to.
But we are, but there are.
Line items separated for that.
Okay.
Okay, and the rest of the packet is really different financing options. I've included information directly from AWC that provides in detail. And then also the election results for items that are voted. On page 119 is a summary of those different options. And page 120 provides a summary of what those different options could generate. So there are, you know, specific ones that you want me to address. I'm happy to do that.
So the BNO tax piece, there's some conversation potentially where it might work with manufacturing activities? And that might generate, it looks like what?
So the two that we have, two different scenarios. And again, this is, I want to say that this is really just purely, I guess, if you take a look at the whole BNO tax, there's some expertise that is required really to monitor the BNO tax to make sure that it's being applied appropriately. You know, from the taxpayers.
Right.
But the BNO tax, if we applied it to all activity, just an estimate would be about 3.1 million annually at a two-tenths of 1%. And then half of that would be 1.6 million. An estimate, because we don't have the latest figures on the square footage. If it were to be applied square footage-wise at 10 cents per square foot, it's about 420,000 and about 210,000. For.
Do many cities do it by square foot? Is that specifically kind of capturing warehousing activities or something?
Yes, warehousing activities.
Really?
Yeah. So City of Kent does, I think DuPont also does it.
Yeah. Interesting. How about surrounding cities? Anyone do the excess levy, property tax levy?
Yeah, there are some cities that do that and it is on page, let's see, one, page 190? Or starting on page, actually, it's quite a bit. It's starting on page 181. You can see the different excess levies. But really, the excess levy is, you know, if you want to go above the $1.60. And the city is currently at .71. Yeah, just over in the past 11, since 2011, there have been 284 that went to vote and 231 measures passed.
So question about the BNO. How do you? The state has different rates for different types of businesses. So how does it work at the local level?
My understanding is if you apply a rate, you apply the same rate across all classifications.
As opposed to the differing rates? So in Tacoma's case, they have one rate or?
Actually, I don't recall what Tacoma says.
Because I'm trying to understand.
Actually, when I think about it, I think the, actually, I don't know.
I think it is consistent across, I think, because we paid it for years on legal services.
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
I'm about ready to file that one personally, but I don't recall. It's only due once a year.
Yeah, okay. Because I've never really understood, because the state has different rates and there's exemptions and then some cities do it and.
So cities can do it, states can do it as well.
And then Tacoma expanded theirs a few years ago when they included the hospitals.
Which was difficult for them. And didn't they back out of that or did they still do it?
So I guess I would need a lot more information on that.
Yeah, and we would need to. If that's something that the city council is interested in, we would have to do a digger, deeper dive into that. So this is really just, I mean, there's a lot of different factors that go into it. And then really getting to know what the taxpayer business is. But again, this is just a preliminary look.
Sure, no, it's helpful, yep. Mr. Pearson and Mr. Brandster.
I had a quick question on that. So if someone, if a city did, you know, do the BNO tax, is that something that they could take away at some point or is that like frowned upon just to use it for a couple of years or how does that work? I mean, that's kind of, I don't know, would rub me the wrong way. It's like, oh, it's a tight time, you know, for everyone. And now you're adding more taxes onto the public, you know, so that's just to kind of weather the storm. So I just was curious about that.
You know, it's really, we would implement it based on whatever the city council wanted to do. I don't know if it would be frowned upon or.
I just didn't know if you'd seen any other cities that have like only had it for four or five years and took it away, or if it typically just goes on and stays forever, you know? So stays forever.
Yes, Councilor, I'm not aware of any tax actually being implemented by a local government and then them taking it back. For example, DuPont has a BNO tax on its warehousing. And they have the, I don't know what the percentage is on the BNO tax, but they generate about $273,000. However, they also have the BNO tax based on the square footage, which generates about 1.1 million. So, and that's DuPont. As Ms. Kraus pointed out, if that's something we wanted to pursue, we would need to do some more diligence and some analysis in that area. I would say the challenge that not just Lakewood, but local governments have in general is, you know, the taxes that you have available that you haven't implemented are very, very regressive. And while they might help our general fund, they really are not, like for example, BNO tax, I would just simply define as not business-friendly because it takes revenue right off the top. It's not based on profits or anything along those lines. It's based on their gross revenue. And that's why most cities don't have it. Those cities that do have a BNO tax, like Seattle, Tacoma, some of the other larger cities, is that it's, there's a benefit, is what I've heard over my several decades working in local government, is that there's a benefit of being in those cities. So that's a cost of doing business. But then you have some cities that will have a BNO tax on just a specific activity, like DuPont has one and other cities will have a BNO tax on just, you know, manufacturing or light industrial. And that's considered a cost of business for those, for those businesses. So it's much more selective than all businesses. So, but again, the menu of options that local governments have is very, very, very limited.
Thanks.
On the chart of financing options that then go on to be discussed, that that neither utilities taxes or gambling taxes are included on the list is, although I understood that at least in some cases, those things are below the allowable state rate. Are those just something that we're, there are things that are significantly negative about them that we shouldn't consider them as options?
You're correct that there are some of the utility taxes and the gambling taxes that are under the state allowed rates. They're not included here. We just didn't consider them, but definitely it could be an option for the council.
Could be, but right now it's not a, it isn't, this is a list of the options that you'd prefer we consider.
I think it are the ones that would generate more substantial revenue.
Anyone else with questions? Okay, anything else, Ms. Kraus?
That's all I have.
I'd just like to add, Mayor and Council, this is, you know, this is just our first foray into the 25-26 budget. We feel pretty good about the revenue forecast. But one of the things that we haven't done yet is, you know, we haven't scrubbed the expenditure side and looked at options and alternatives as it relates. looked at options and alternatives as it relates to not just the money, but also the delivery of services. So that's something that we're going to have to take a look at. I'll also point out is over the years, you know, a two, two percent operating deficit, I mean, that's it's two percent. So just trying to put it into perspective. I think the larger issue is during the last biennium, you know, the council wanted us to be aggressive and adding, you know, new programs and things like that. And as we pointed out, you know, we didn't feel that we had the capacity looking beyond the current biennium. So that's something that we're going to have to deal with as well. And that's a, that's a bit of, that's going to be a bit of a challenge. So on the, on the really positive side is your capital program, particularly in the area of parks and transportation is really fully funded, you know, as you look out into twenty-six and even twenty-seven and even twenty-eight. And then actually transportation even further than that. So that's a bit of an anomaly for local governments. Usually local governments are scrambling, trying to figure out how to cap, you know, finance their capital infrastructure. Yet that is really not an issue for us. We actually are very, very well funded with our capital program in terms of leveraging the financial resources from the city, but then also leveraging those funds that we get from the state and federal government. And so just wanted to point that out.
Very good. Anything else? That's it. A lot, a lot of good options and work and appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, that is it for tonight's conversation on discussion items. Mr. Caffield, do you have some additional items on your report?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Actually, just wanted to report on some, some really good news on several fronts. The first is that this past weekend, starting with the House and then the Senate, they passed a a bit of a, a bit of a budget and within that budget included the city's request of a million dollars for Lhasa in support of their 25 unit affordable housing project. And so that now goes, we understand to the president for his signature. And so Lhasa can be expected to be able to access those monies in the coming months. Then there's a process that they have to go through to do that. But again, that doesn't happen without the leadership and the policy direction of this body. And we understand that that Lhasa, I think their project is twelve and a half million. And I think with this million puts them at about thirteen or thirteen and a half million. So it gives them some flexibility from a contingency standpoint, as well as from a inflationary standpoint. So again, just wanted to report on, on, on that. Also wanted to report that Sound Transit, the board is expecting to take action, knock on wood, at their meeting on March 28th, at the end of this month, to approve the funding for our Lakewood Station access improvement projects, of which there are twelve. Mostly in the Springbrook neighborhood to bring curbs, gutters and sidewalks and even street lighting. And a couple of other projects over by the Sounder Station, north of the Sounder Station, including one twelfth between Gravely, Lake Drive and Bridgeport. And I know in the past that we had reported that this was initiated back in 2021, 2022, and been working with Sound Transit. They've gone through an environmental review on all of these projects. And once the Sound Transit Board acts on this, and again, hopefully this will happen on March 28th, we will then be in a position to actually enter into an agreement with Sound Transit, where they will turn those monies over to the city. And then beginning in twenty-four, more like twenty-five through 2030 or 2031, 2032, we will then build all of those projects, all from Sound Transit money. So again, considerable investments coming, coming to the city. Meanwhile, in the kind of the medium timeframe, the Puget Sound Regional Council is going to be doing their call for transportation funding and City of Lakewood gets to apply for three projects. And the three that we are recommending moving forward in is construction funds for Military Road between, you know, Edgewood and what, where Edgewood and Washington Boulevard ends all the way up to one twelfth and Far West. And then that will connect into, you know, sidewalks all the way to Far West from Washington Boulevard. Design is currently underway on that project, which is current, which is funded with existing PSRC funds. So we feel, feel pretty confident that that will rank very highly since PSRC has already funded the design. The other, the second project is construction funds in support of one hundredth between South, coming off South Tacoma Way to Lakeview, going over the railroad there where Tacoma Trophy is. And also some improvements at the intersection, intersection of one hundredth and fortieth. The city and, and design is expected to get underway on that later this year or next year. And we also, that's also funded with PSRC fundings from a previous cycle, including a small amount of money for right of way that may be needed in that area as well. So that's some good news. And so again, we think that this project will compete very well. Kind of similar to the previous one. And then we always submit for a, an overlay or a pavement preservation project. And the one that we think will compete very favorably is the other side of one hundredth from Lakeview all the way down to Bridgeport. Essentially on one side, you have the Lakewood Industrial Park and on the other side, you have that residential neighborhood. So those are the three projects that we're, we're currently look, looking at. Don't know if we'll, you know, I, I think I would just try and manage expectations. If we can get funding for one or two of the projects, I would, I would consider that a win. Particularly, I know Councilmember Bokey can speak to kind of the process as it goes through a PCRC. But again, we will do our due, our due diligence there. Also just wanted to follow up with what Ms. Spear said is that on, on Friday, a Thurston County Superior Court judge denied BI, BIAW's motion to stay or suspend the implementation of the state's new building codes, which this body had adopted via ordinance last Monday. And so they now for sure go into effect this coming Friday, March fifteenth. So just wanted to pass that on. Also, some other good news is our, our police chief, Smith, reports that overall through the first two months of this year, and it's two months, the crime is down almost thirty percent. And by the way, it, it's not like crime is down like, you know, from seven, you know, from ten to seven. I mean, they're good sizable. Now, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but they're a good size. It's a good sizable amount of activity. And that also includes a significant decrease in property crimes of thirty-six percent, including burglary, which is down thirteen percent, larceny down twenty percent. Motor vehicle thefts down a whopping sixty percent. Huge and continuing to decline. It's still got to go a ways to go to get back to pre 2021, but it is certainly trending in the right way. And then robbery is down fifty-six percent. Chief Smith attributes it to, to two things. One is being fully staffed and having people out there, not just being active, but also being proactive. And then secondly, as Ms. Kraus mentioned, the technology tools that we have brought to the table, whether it's, you know, for example, the flock safety cameras and, and other tools. It is certainly working very well. And I will say that the word is getting out to the criminal community. Don't come to Lakewood. And we believe that that is attributing it as well. But really, the number one reason I'll just say is that are we, you know, we're fully staffed at, you know, our, our full allocation of ninety-nine police officers plus a couple of over hires as we anticipate some retirements and things and things along those lines. Just a real quick upcoming events. Tomorrow afternoon, if, I think, I think the mayor has registered. I know I'll be attending Habitat for Humanity is having their annual fundraising luncheon. And then on this Friday, March fifteenth, there's two major events from four to six P M. I know the mayor will be representing the city and presenting a proclamation recognizing American Lake VA's medical cent, medical center, their centennial, their hundredth year celebration. And then later that evening, the Lakewood Multicultural Coalition will be hosting its second annual Dr. Claudia Thomas Community Services Award Gala event at the McAvic Center. And then the following Wednesday, so a week from this Wednesday, on March twentieth, from eleven thirty to one thirty is the annual EDB meeting. Yeah. So it's it's a week for, it's a week from Wednesday, Councilmember. Yeah, yeah. And then, and then, and then later that evening, the school district is, well, actually rather, some youth from the school district are hosting a private screening of student voice on fentanyl awareness at the AMC Theater. And I know this body has all been invited and myself included. And so I know I'll, I'll, I'll be attending, I'll be attending that and wanting to hear what they have to say. So, so Mayor, that's, that's what I got.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions? The private screening should be really well done. I talked to the superintendent the other day and he was very proud of the work and the videos and encouraged us to, to attend if we can. So I will be there. Thank you. Okay. Council comments, we'll start with Ms. Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to the people that presented tonight to the neighborhood presentation. I thought it was really informative and I think it's a really great start in some, a program that is really needed in Lakewood. So I appreciate that presentation. And this Friday, I'm looking forward to going to the LMCC banquet. So that should be a great time. Thank you.
Very good. And Mr. Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am meeting with Josh Brown with PSRC tomorrow, so looking forward to that. And I don't have any other comments tonight.
Very good.
Thanks.
Mr. Branstadter?
I have my meeting tomorrow with the facilitator who's going to be helping us with our retreat. So I'm looking forward to that, that I did talk with a number of the folks that had provided comments to me or otherwise with their concerns about the apartment project in the, in the town center that would displace the Barnes and Noble, but utilize that large empty lot to do that. There's there, there's a bit of deja vu to back when we were trying to create the, our, our vision in eight years ago. Where there was a great deal of just general public opposition to any more apartments at all. That, but generally in my conversations is that people have kind of, have, have, have after being talked to, they, they have understood that this is a part of a solution to the problem that Ms. Spear was presenting to us. And that had to do with, with planning and that they didn't really understand that when we adopted the downtown area plan, sub area plan, that there were goals about increasing housing, increasing jobs. Okay. And then increasing the viability of the economics of the, of the center to be able to do that while we were doing something to park. So I think that it's, you know, we, again, we, we're getting a lot of concern from people with partial information. And that we, we just, but that citizens are actually appreciative of being contacted back and getting something accurate to be able to go and do that. So that after you talk with them, they go away, or at least they don't go away mad.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bokey.
Yeah, just a quick report. Last week at the Planning Commission, they did approve the expansion of the multifamily tax exemption area, the downtown sub area plan. So we should be seeing that soon.
Great. Deputy Mayor Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend the school board meeting this evening, earlier this evening, and it was really rewarding to hear the students talk about the support that they have gotten and that how had us moved them forward with their, whatever they had going on in their life. They appreciated the staff for taking the time to help them with that. And I thought that was really positive. There was one gentleman that talked about, I think it was at one of the schools, a program that was in the earlier grades did not follow through to a fourth grader. So he, he was not upset. He just wanted to see if there was a way that they could provide support because one of his student, one of his children were not doing well in their grade production. So it was a positive meeting. I, I really did enjoy listening to it. I did share with them that our police officers are fully staffed because the comment was made that they saw the report about the retail theft in our city. And so we talked about, I talked about the policemen and why they are seeing more police officers out there now. It's because we are fully staffed. Parents was thanking this, the teachers for what they're doing for the students. So I was, that was a positive meeting for me to hear tonight. So that was good. I did meet with the facilitator today. That was interesting and I enjoyed talking to him because I had met him before when Andrew was here. We met him. So you, you'll recognize him if you see him. Easy to talk to. Let's see. The gay lot for yous that have, have supported, thank you so much. It's going to be fun. We had a goal of two hundred. The last count I heard was one ninety-six. So the people are stepping up. We did bump heads with a couple of sorority groups this year. We didn't realize we were booking our events on the same day. So that's something to look forward to going forward when we make our plans or reach out to our supporters. So. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. So busy week. Today at eight, I met with the consultant for the retreat, had a good conversation and look forward to working with all of you on those issues. So that should be a good session. At ten, then I had an interview with a consultant for the Pierce County Library system. They're working on their strategic plan and they're interviewing, I guess, selected folks in the community. I drew the short straw and I gave them, you know, my two cents worth about where the library has served residents of Lakewood or not in the last few years post COVID. It's been challenging, frankly. And they have work to do. I expressed that we're hopeful that the interim library will meet the needs of the community in a positive way, but look forward to the decision-making process on a more permanent location and site. And the need to make sure that we have from our perspective, a continuing positive partnership moving forward for the benefit of the residents. So we, we have done yeoman's work to be a good partner. And I let her know about some of the specific things that we've done. So she found that information helpful. And I ran to a meeting at Pierce Transit at four for a commissioner meeting, the monthly commissioner meeting. We had some really good information presented about the customer experience plan that the commission adopted to truly try to make sure that we're meeting the, the service needs of various residents within the service area on certain routes. They've restricted some routes that aren't generating a lot of ridership and moving those resources toward areas that are, and they're also expanding their runner program. So for example, in a couple of areas or zones, they had really limited and low ridership. They eliminated those, those runs and used the runner service, which is kind of an on-call and demand service. And that has already tripled the amount of ridership that they previously had in those zones with buses kind of circulating around. So they're really trying to be innovative because like all institutions, money is tight. And they're trying to use their resources as wisely as they can. We're reviewing interim, interim productivity standards and all this ridership data to kind of further inform where the agency goes in the next, you know, four to 10 years with regard to increase in service in areas where it makes sense to increase service and decrease service routes in areas that, that aren't doing well ridership wise. As I mentioned earlier tonight, Lakewood's ridership frankly is one of the key bright spots, over eight hundred thousand boardings in our town center and the other five twelve area annually. And that's huge increase from twenty-two to twenty-three. So good positive things there. Other than that, it was a good meeting. One of the things that they're doing on a capital side is they're replacing several hundred of the bus shelters. The bus shelters will have a new look to them. They'll have, they're all lighted. They're powered by solar panels, which will be great. A little bit more of an interactive experience and some of the ones serviced by the stream network, they're going to have kind of a call for information. So folks with limited ability to read, they can press a button and have the So folks with limited ability to read, they can press a button and have the information about schedules spoken to them. So they're trying to enhance the customer experience greatly. So that was a good meeting. Thank you, Mr. Branstadder, for your comments about chatting with folks expressing concerns to all of us by email or otherwise in certain social media marketplaces. Uh, I am one that does reach out and call people on occasion. And I called a few folks that sent us some emails and I said, gee, appreciate your passion, but did you know? And gave them factual information about what's happened to the QFC property, what is going to be happening here in the town center. And I think they appreciate it. They may not necessarily agree with all of it, but they do appreciate receiving at least a feedback call. So I'll, I'll try to continue doing that as best I can. General Harrison's memorials, we know it was April sixth. I was asked by, uh, Karen and the family to speak briefly on behalf of all of us in the city. So if you have, if you have thoughts or themes that you'd like me to kind of put together and articulate, I'm more than happy to receive that. It's going to be a limited, maybe three to five minute thing. And then they have somebody from the military that's going to be doing something in different walks of his life that will be presenting at that memorial event. So more to follow on that. And I think that's it. I'm going to the event at the BA on Friday, going to the, uh, multicultural gala event with the deputy mayor on Friday evening and it should be a busy week. Anything else? Pretty good, the order? All right, we're adjourned.